Good evening, welcome to the Township of Lacey, August 14th, 2014 meeting. Adequate notice of this meeting has been given in accordance with the Open Public Meeting Act pursuant to public laws nineteen seventy-five. Said notice was advertised in the Asbury Park Press and the Beacon, was posted on the bulletin board showing the time and the place of the meeting. We're going to begin with a salute to the flag in a moment, silence please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, item number one, first reading of ordinance two thousand fourteen seventeen, setting the salaries for recreation department bus drivers.
Nordin's of Township of Lacey County, Board of State of New Jersey, amending in Nordin's entitled in Nordin's of Township of Lacey County, Board of State of New Jersey, affixing and determining the salaries, wages, and compensations of the officers, employees, and members of the governing body as township. This is setting the scale for our recreation bus drivers. Step one, twelve fifty; step two, thirteen dollars; step three, thirteen fifty.
Can I have motion?
Move it, second.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Cortolo?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mr. Most?
Yes.
Mayor Quinn.
Item number two, second reading of ordinance two thousand fourteen sixteen, amending chapter three twenty-three vehicles and traffic so as to add additional through streets.
Ordinance of Township of Lacey County, Board of State of New Jersey, amending and supplementing chapter three twenty-three of the Township Code of Township of Lacey into vehicles and traffic so as to amend section three twenty-three dash twenty-seven entitled Schedule Four Through Streets. This is correcting a situation in the code book with regards to Clearview Street from its intersection with Old Street to its intersection with Canterbury. It's going to be a through street. All intersecting streets to that street will now have the stop signs will be placed on them.
Any second reading, I'll open to the public. Any public comment?
Seeing on motion, calls for. Move it, second.
They may need a second on marks.
Second.
Mark David.
Aye.
Motion on your audience.
Move.
Second.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Cortolo?
Yes.
Mr. Most?
Yes.
Mayor Quinn.
Item number three, business in two thousand fourteen one eighty-five, awarding a contract for payroll services.
Resolution Township of Lacey County, Board of State of New Jersey, awarding a contract for payroll services and time and attendance systems to Prime Point LLC. The Township of Lacey went out for RFP with regards to payroll services and time and attendance systems. This is just payroll management and time clocks, management of benefit time off, management of the health benefits, management of, it's going to be W2s and payroll, all processed electronically versus paper checks, which would be a huge savings to the township.
Can I have motion?
Move it, second.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mr. Cortolo?
Yes.
Mr. Most?
Yes.
Mayor Quinn.
Item number four, resolution two thousand fourteen one eighty-six, awarding a contract for the purchase of a street sweeper.
Resolution Township of Lacey County, Board of State of New Jersey, awarding a contract for the purchase of one two thousand and fourteen Elgin Eagle Ford Andul Street Sweeper Mountain on an auto car expert chassis to Grand Turk Equipment Company Incorporated. This is based on the two thousand and fourteen approved budget. We are trading in our two thousand and one street back, we're getting twelve thousand five hundred dollars for it, so the net price of this new street sweeper is two hundred and fifty-six thousand eight hundred and twelve dollars.
Can I have motion?
Move it, second.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Most?
Yes.
Mr. Cortolo?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mayor Quinn.
Item number five, resolution two thousand fourteen one eighty-seven, awarding a contract for the purchase of a Ford F-550 truck.
Resolution Township of Lacey County, Board of State of New Jersey, awarding a contract for the purchase of one two thousand and fifteen Ford F-550 four-by-four rack body with tool pack and nine-foot snowplow package to Dishman Flemington Ford Lincoln Mercury in the amount of fifty-nine thousand nine hundred and ninety-one dollars.
Can I have motion?
Move it.
Second.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Cortolo?
Yes.
Mr. Most?
Yes.
Mayor Quinn.
Item number six, resolution two thousand fourteen one eighty-eight, awarding a contract for the purchase of a GMC Sierra twenty-five hundred truck.
Resolution Township of Lacey County, Board of State of New Jersey, awarding a contract for the purchase of one two thousand and fifteen GMC Sierra twenty-five hundred HD four-wheel-drive double cab with tool pack and nine-foot snowplow package to Barlow Automotive LLC in the amount of forty thousand one hundred and thirty dollars.
Can I have motion?
Move it.
Second?
Second.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mr. Cortolo?
Yes.
Mr. Most?
Yes.
Mayor Quinn.
Item number seven, resolution two thousand fourteen one eighty-nine, awarding a contract for the purchase of a Ford Explorer.
Resolution Township of Lacey County, Board of State of New Jersey, awarding contract to buyer Ford for a two thousand and fourteen Ford Explorer four-wheel-drive base vehicle for the Department of Community Development in the amount of twenty-four thousand seven hundred and eight dollars.
Can I have motion?
Move it, second.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Cortolo?
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mr. Most?
Yes.
Mayor Quinn.
Item number eight, resolution two thousand fourteen one ninety, awarding a contract for the HVAC control system for the municipal building.
Resolution Township of Lacey County, Board of State of New Jersey, awarding a contract to Peterson Service Company Incorporated for the HVAC control system upgrade for the Lacey Township Municipal Building in the amount of sixty thousand two hundred and twenty-five dollars.
Move it, second.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Cortolo?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mr. Most?
Yes.
Mayor Quinn.
Item number nine, resolution two thousand fourteen one ninety-one, awarding a contract for dredging of Stouts Creek.
Resolution Township of Lacey County, Board of State of New Jersey, awarding a contract for the Stouts Creek maintenance dredging to Albert Marine Construction Company in the amount of sixty-four thousand five hundred and sixty-nine dollars. This dredging will not be starting until sometime into the fall when the DEP allows you to go in and dredge.
Motion, second.
Mr. Most?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Cortolo?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mayor Quinn.
Item number ten, resolution two thousand fourteen one ninety-two, authorizing amendment to the contract for the two thousand and twelve community development block grant.
Resolution Township of Lacey County, Board of State of New Jersey, authorizing execution amendment to the contract with CJ Hess Incorporated for the two thousand and twelve community development block grant project, the change in the contract prices in the amount of seven thousand seven hundred and twenty-eight dollars and thirty-one cents, and this closes out that contract.
Move it, second.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Cortolo?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mr. Most?
Yes.
Mayor Quinn.
Yes, and the train is coming through, Dave?
(laughing).
Item number eleven, resolution two thousand fourteen one ninety-three, authorizing an amendment to the contract for the Bayberry Village Resourcing Project.
Resolution Township of Lacey County, Board of State of New Jersey, authorizing execution amendment to the contract with Swift and Sons Incorporated for the Bayberry Village Resourcing Project. This is a change order in the amount of three thousand nine hundred and thirty-four dollars and ninety-nine cents, and this will close out that project.
Can I have motion?
Mr. Cortolo?
Yes.
Oh, a second, I'm sorry. Who's second? Somebody?
Second.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mr. Most?
Yes.
Mayor Quinn.
Item number twelve, resolution two thousand fourteen one ninety-four, authorizing amendment to the contract for the purchase of auto parts.
Resolution Township of Lacey County, Board of State of New Jersey, amending a contract for the purchase of automotive parts and accessories to Freehold Ford Incorporated and Eastern Warehouse Distributors Incorporated. This is extending the contract for one additional year, and in two thousand and fifteen we will be going out to bid again.
Move it, second.
Mr. Cortolo?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mr. Most?
Yes.
Mayor Quinn.
Item number thirteen, resolution two thousand fourteen one ninety-five, authorizing receipt of bids for bulk for two minutes material.
Resolution Township of Lacey County, Board of State of New Jersey, authorizing receipt of bids for bulk for two minutes material.
Can I have motion?
Move it.
Second.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Cortolo?
Yes.
Mr. Most?
Yes.
Mayor Quinn.
Item number fourteen, resolution two thousand fourteen one ninety-six, authorizing receipt of bids for the rental of John Deere loaders.
Resolution Township of Lacey County, Board of State of New Jersey, authorizing the receipt of bids for the rental of John Deere loaders for the two thousand and fourteen leaf collection program and the two thousand and fourteen, two thousand and fifteen snow season.
Move it.
Second?
Second.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Cortolo?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mr. Most?
Yes.
Mayor Quinn.
Item number fifteen, resolution two thousand fourteen one ninety-seven, authorizing the execution of an emergency management assistance grant.
Resolution Township of Lacey County, Board of State of New Jersey, authorizing execution of the emergency management assistance grants. Total grant is the amount of ten thousand dollars, five thousand is from local and matching funds, which could be in-kind services based on the salaries that we already pay, and five thousand is coming from the federal government.
Can I have motion?
Move it, second.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Cortolo?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mr. Most?
Yes.
Mayor Quinn.
Item number sixteen, resolution two thousand fourteen one ninety-eight, authorizing execution of attachments application for the post-sandy planning assistance grant.
Resolution Township of Lacey County, Board of State of New Jersey, authorizing attachments application for a post-sandy planning assistance grant for the New Jersey, from the New Jersey Department of Community Affairs. The four items that we'll be applying for and hoping to receive some grant money from at least one of them is automating and updating the system for computers for processing of zoning and construction permits in the amount of twenty-five thousand, creating a GIS database to support future planning efforts in the amount of fifty thousand, creating and adopting a flood plain management plan as an element of the master plan in the amount of fifty thousand, and developing an emergency operations management plan in the amount of fifty thousand.
Can I have motion?
Motion.
Second.
Mr. Cortolo?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mr. Most?
Yes.
Mayor Quinn.
Item number seventeen, resolution two thousand fourteen one ninety-nine, certifying that the governing body had received a two thousand and thirteen municipal audit.
Resolution Township of Lacey County, Board of State of New Jersey, certifying to the local finance board that all members of the local governing body have received the annual municipal audit for the year two thousand and thirteen.
Can I have motion?
Move it.
Second.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Cortolo?
Yes.
Mr. Most?
Yes.
Mayor Quinn.
Item number eighteen, resolution two thousand fourteen two hundred, appointing a laborer to the Department of Public Works.
Resolution Township of Lacey County, Board of State of New Jersey, authorizing the employment of a full-time laborer for the Department of Public Works, and it is Daniel Scalfane, and tonight he happens to be with us in the audience.
Motion.
Welcome aboard.
Second.
Mr. Cortolo?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mr. Most?
Yes.
Mayor Quinn.
Yes, and congratulations, Daniel, you are now an employee. Best of luck, dear. Item number nineteen, resolution two thousand fourteen two oh one, appointing a clerk to the tax assessor's office.
Resolution Township of Lacey County, Board of State of New Jersey, authorizing the full-time employment of Crystal Connady for the tax assessor's office.
Move it, second.
Who, does that say you, Steve? Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Cortolo?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mr. Most?
Yes.
Mayor Quinn.
Yes, Daniel, it's not necessary to stay arrested at a meeting if you'd like to take your young lady and leave. Feel free.
No demerits for that.
Thanks, guys. Item number twenty, resolution two thousand fourteen two oh two, appointing a bus driver for the recreation department.
Resolution Township of Lacey County, Board of State of New Jersey, appointing on-the-bus drivers for the recreation department, and we are appointing Greg Ammerman.
Can I have motion?
Motion.
Second.
Mr. Cortolo?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mr. Most?
Yes.
Mayor Quinn.
Item number twenty-one, resolution two thousand fourteen two oh three, appointing, I'm sorry, authorizing a leave of absence under the FMLA guidelines.
Resolution Township of Lacey County, Board of State of New Jersey, authorizing leave of absence for Peter Johnson under the Federal Family Medical Leave Act. Part of this is paid, he's using and exhausting the rest of his balances for, that he has of sick time and vacation time, and the rest will be unpaid, and it's through November seventh, two thousand and fourteen.
Can I have motion?
Motion, I have my prayers are with.
Second.
Mr. Most?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Cortolo?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mayor Quinn.
Item number twenty-two, two thousand, resolution two thousand fourteen two oh four, authorizing cancellation of taxes due for property acquired by the township.
Resolution Township of Lacey County, Board of State of New Jersey, authorizing tax electric to cancel taxes due for, due for properties acquired by the township. This is the old piece of property where the old billboard was at the business park. The billboard's no longer there, so it's not a taxable item, and one of the tenants in the business park was paying the taxes, but now that the billboard's not there, it is vacant land and it resorts back to the township because it is our property. So we have to cancel the taxes that are on it.
Can I have motion?
Move it, second.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Cortolo?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
One second, just a question. Is it possible to get a permit to put it on the billboard up there and rent it out?
No, because the rail trail runs right through the middle of it now.
Does it really?
Yeah.
Yes.
I was going to ask the same thing there, Mr. Dykoff.
So, Mr. Most is at a yes, too?
Our municipal alliance to get a message out there to the community.
Yeah, it was in, it was located right in the area where the Barnegat Branch Trail had to go.
Right.
So, okay, so that's a yes for you?
Yes.
And Mayor Quinn.
Yes, resolution twenty-three, resolution two thousand fourteen two oh five, authorizing the placement of a lien on block one twenty-four, lot seventy-six for property maintenance.
We have about eight of these tonight. Resolution Township of Lacey County, Board of State of New Jersey, accepting the certification of the Director of Public Works concerning cost incurred in the removal of debris and cleaning up of the property located at seven twenty-two Palm Beach Drive, and authorizing the placement of lien against said property for said costs, eighty dollars and forty-five cents is the lien.
Motion.
Second.
Mr. Most?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Cortolo?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mayor Quinn.
Item number twenty-four, resolution two thousand fourteen two oh six, authorizing placement of a lien on block two forty-two, lot twelve, for property maintenance.
Resolution Township of Lacey County, Board of State of New Jersey, accepting the certification of the Director of Public Works concerning cost incurred in the removal of debris and cleaning up of the property located at one oh seven Oakwood Place, and authorizing the placement of lien against said property for said costs in the amount of one hundred and seventy-nine dollars and forty cents.
Move it, second.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mr. Cortolo?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Most?
Yes.
Mayor Quinn.
Item number twenty-five, resolution two thousand fourteen two oh seven, placing, authorizing the placement of a lien on block three seventy-four, lot forty-eight point oh one, for property maintenance.
Resolution Township of Lacey County, Board of State of New Jersey, accepting the certification of the Director of Public Works concerning cost incurred in the removal of debris and cleaning up of the property located at eight forty-eight Enson Drive, and authorizing the placement of lien against said property for said costs in the amount of eighty dollars and forty-five cents.
Motion, please.
Move it, second.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Cortolo?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mr. Most?
Yes.
Mayor Quinn.
Item number twenty-six, resolution two thousand fourteen two oh eight, authorizing the placement of a lien on block four twenty-nine, lot one, for property maintenance.
Resolution Township of Lacey County, Board of State of New Jersey, accepting the certification of the Director of Public Works concerning cost incurred in the removal of debris and cleaning up of the property located at three twenty-five Yorktown Drive, and authorizing the placement of a lien against said property for said costs in the amount of eighty-nine dollars and sixty-five cents.
Can I have motion?
Move it.
Second.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Cortolo?
Yes.
Mr. Most?
Yes.
Mayor Quinn.
Yes, twenty-six, resolution two thousand fourteen two oh eight, authorizing the placement of a lien on block four twenty-nine, lot one, for property maintenance.
Whoa, 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 we just did that one.
Twenty-seven.
Twenty-seven, resolutions, we've got too many of these tonight.
I told you, like eight!
Twenty-seven, resolution two thousand fourteen two oh nine, authorizing the placement of a lien on block seven sixty-three, lot forty-four, for property maintenance.
Resolution Township of Lacey County, Board of State of New Jersey, accepting the certification of the Director of Public Works concerning cost incurred in the removal of debris and cleaning up of the property located at two nineteen Laura Boulevard, and authorizing the placement of lien against said property for said costs in the amount of eighty-nine dollars and ninety-four cents.
Move it, second.
Mr. Cortolo?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mr. Most?
Yes.
Mayor Quinn.
Item number twenty-eight, resolution two thousand fourteen two ten, authorizing the placement of a lien on block twelve thirty-one, lot eight, for property maintenance.
Resolution Township of Lacey County, Board of State of New Jersey, accepting the certification of the Director of Public Works concerning cost incurred in the removal of debris and cleaning up of the property located at fifteen eighty-two D Road, and authorizing the placement of a lien against said property for said costs in the amount of eighty-nine dollars and sixty-five cents.
Move it, second.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mr. Cortolo?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Most?
Yes.
Mayor Quinn.
Item number twenty-nine, resolution two thousand fourteen two eleven, authorizing the placement of a lien on block fourteen hundred, lot eighty-two, for property maintenance.
Resolution Township of Lacey County, Board of State of New Jersey, accepting the certification of the Director of Public Works concerning cost incurred in the removal of debris and cleaning up of the property located at two fifteen Station Drive, and authorizing the placement of a lien against said property for said costs in the amount of eighty-nine dollars and ninety-four cents.
Can I have motion?
Move it.
Second, please?
Second.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Cortolo?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mr. Most?
Yes.
Mayor Quinn.
Yes, and number thirty, resolution two thousand fourteen two twelve, authorizing the placement of a lien on block fourteen thirty-seven, lot thirty, for property maintenance.
Resolution Township of Lacey County, Board of State of New Jersey, accepting the certification of the Director of Public Works concerning cost incurred in the removal of debris and cleaning up of the property located at four seventeen Lakeside Drive North, and authorizing the placement of a lien against said property for said costs in the amount of eighty-nine dollars and ninety-four cents.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Cortolo?
Yes.
Mr. Most?
Yes.
Mayor Quinn.
Yes, item number thirty-one, resolution two thousand fourteen two thirteen, authorizing cancellation of old outstanding municipal court checks.
Resolution Township of Lacey County, Board of State of New Jersey, authorizing the cancellation of old outstanding checks from the Lacey Township Municipal Court regular account. These are five checks that have not been cashed, it's a total amount of fifty-nine dollars that we need to cancel.
Motion.
Second.
Mr. Most?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Cortolo?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mayor Quinn.
Yes, item number thirty-two, resolution two thousand fourteen, two fourteen, authorizing the insertion of a special item of revenue into two thousand and fourteen municipal budget.
Resolution Township of Lacey County, Board of State of New Jersey, providing for the insertion of a special item of revenue in appropriation in two thousand and fourteen budget known as chapter one fifty-nine of the Township of Lacey pursuant to NJSA forty-eight colon four dash eighty-seven. This is from the United States Department of Justice, it's the federal bulletproof vest partnership grant. When the township goes out and buys bulletproof vests for our police officers, there is a grant program out there, once we pay for them, we receive them, we can turn in our costs up to a certain dollar amount per year to get reimbursed, this is ten thousand three hundred and ten dollars and twenty-three cents.
Can I have motion?
Move it.
Second, please?
Second.
Mr. Kennis?
Second.
Full favor? Any items?
No.
Okay, forty items, we got through.
Good.
Any comments? Mark?
January first.
Thank you. All I want to talk about was Lacy Day. Uh, Lacy Day was a fantastic day, as usual. Pretty much, we always have, um, great weather. We had one year where the thunderstorms rolled in and I saw Jim Wieland get kinda nervous and start rushing everyone off the field, but all in all, it was a great day. I want to thank some people and probably first and foremost, the Rotarys. They keep on coming through and they came through this time again. They, they did a fantastic job cooking and organizing and, and serving the people. Saw a lot of smiles. I hope they're there for a long time to continue with, with, um, this tradition of Lacy Day. I want to thank Jim Wieland and his recreation staff for setting up early in the morning, for running it all day, for keeping the crowd informed, for playing games, things like that. Jim's been doing a fantastic job in recreation and once again, he brought Lacy Day, uh, through and, and again, he ran around like a crazy man, but he does a great job. Casey Parker and his crew, uh, setting up, keeping things clean, a lot of garbage, uh, pretty, pretty interesting. I was, um, I was at a function, uh, over the weekend and the garbage was just piling up, piling up. And I said, "Boy, had Casey Parker and his crew, we wouldn't be having this problem." And then, of course, all the participants, all the vendors who came out, uh, with the giveaways. Wouldn't be Lacy Day without them. I, I think it's great for them and for the residents to see what they do all day. So, all in all, it was a fantastic day. We had a lot of fun. We got to honor the Little League on that day. And tonight, we got to honor them again. Real proud of them, the job they did, and I think we'll be hearing their names and their teams for many years to come. Thank you, Mayor.
Thanks, Mark. Mr. Tom?
Yeah, I too want to echo some of those same sentiments. It was an outstanding day, a great day of the family. I was there with my family, um, not a cloud in the sky. Hats off to, uh, Jim Wieland, our rec director. Uh, I think he was out there at six o'clock. And I think some of those, uh, the good folks from the Rotary, uh, I think they cooked a little over twenty-two hundred hamburgers. So, uh, it was a great opportunity for exhibition for all local businesses. So, it was just, I mean, the, the sense of community you get here. And then, we had support from our freeholder. Freeholder Jerry Little was there. Uh, it was great to see him. He's our county executive. Um, uh, he's also the liaison at the Ocean County Health Department where I work. I could tell you factually, uh, that our freeholder is completely vested in this county. I mean, he's, he's advocating for everyone, from our seniors to, uh, to our schools and everyone in between. Truly a champion of Ocean County. To have him there, um, to ask for a ball signed from our Little League team, uh, really made those young, young men feel special. It was, it was just a fantastic day. It was great to see the, the crowd. It was the largest crowd, I think, I've seen, uh, ever at Lacy Day. So, I wanted to, uh, to thank all the folks that prepared that beautiful park, um, and everybody that participated. Uh, it's, uh, very much appreciated. Thank you.
Thanks, Ben. Steven?
Speaking of the rec department, I just wanna, um, today was the last day of the township sponsored rec, uh, summer rec program for kids. Um, and I would like to thank the rec department and all the summer help that put a great program together. Uh, I hope my kids attended every year. And it's one of the better deals out there and have a lot of fun and it's worth every penny. Thanks.
Dave?
Yes. Good evening to all the residents of Lacy Township. I too would like to thank James Wieland and all the rec employees, Rotary and Casey Parker as well. And, uh, just a segue from my colleagues' comments, as far as the summer camp programs are very successful and they were so. Participation's up, badges were up, so all the summer programs were a real success. And that's thanks to the leadership of James Wieland back there in recreation and all the support he gets from all his employees. And I want to thank them for that. We also have, uh, the five K coming up, the twenty-third. And, uh, that's how we support our, all our initiatives for our municipal alliance. So, uh, I challenged Lieutenant Ganley in the police department, so he's got a whole list of his officers ready to, uh...
Beat you.
Ready to what?
Ready to beat you.
Ready to beat me. Thank you. Well said. Thanks.
He was a little lost for words there, so...
He was stuttering.
I appreciate that.
That's good.
You want to finish my next sentence there, Rick? I'd also like to thank the chief for, uh, handling the spill that we had out in Bamber. We had an unfortunate incident and, um, we had some diesel fuel out there. And, uh, you know, the chief doesn't only protect us from crime, but, uh, you know, he really, uh, did a wonderful job. And I want to thank the department, uh, for really stepping up and, uh, taking care of that. And, uh, it just speaks to his talents. He'll also be speaking at the high school for back-to-school night, which is great, on behalf of the municipal alliance in our town, fighting our fight. And he's part of our task force. And, uh, I wanted to thank Dr. Brower and the school board for supporting all our initiatives as far as, uh, fighting drugs. You know, it was brought up there last, that, uh, some folks are upset the way we talk about our drug problem. Well, everybody's communities have the same problems we do. We just talk about it here and we're doing something about it. So, I'm not embarrassed to tell you that. And I don't think it hurts our town to talk about our issues, so... So, with that said, uh, some of the things in municipal alliance that are coming up, we have this, uh, parent support group. And this is run out of the Methodist Church. They call it Sophia. And they meet the first and third Tuesdays from six-thirty PM to seven-thirty PM. And they have guest speakers and counselors there. So, if you have any questions, just stop by the Methodist Church. Also, we have, uh, strengthening families programs. This is a Barnabas Health Institute for, uh, for prevention. And, uh, it's presented by, uh, the Barnabas Health Institute and in partnership with Lacy Municipal Alliance, the Task Force and the Lacy School District. And, uh, it's for fifth and sixth graders. It's a free fourteen-week educational program for Ocean County parents, grandparents, guardians and their fifth and sixth graders, okay? And, um, it'll enrich the, for the parents and guardians, it will enrich existing skills for a successful, healthy substance-free future for their child and become better prepared to meet the complexity of today's parenting challenges. The youth will practice effective communication and health coping strategies and skills resisting peer pressure. And families will unite to practice everything they've learned. So, it starts at eleven. If we could put this on our website, Veronica?
Sure. If you pass it down, I'd love to do it.
Sure. Thank you. And, uh, like I said, uh, it starts at six and, uh, it's over at eight. There's, uh, families break into groups, there's complimentary dinner, but you do need to register. So, I appreciate that. Here's some...
Can I ask one thing, Dave? When is the, the chief speaking at back-to-school night? I know some of yous like to go and it usually falls on one of our township meetings nights.
You know, I, it was a long meeting and I didn't write it down, Veronica, so maybe...
Okay, so I'll reach out to him tomorrow because it maybe, it usually conflicts with our second meeting in September. So, we might want, if any of yous want to go, we, we might want to think about switching that meeting.
You know, he does, he does a great job, so, uh, you know, and it's so, it's just great to inform all our parents that he'll be talking to the freshman group coming in.
And Tom usually has to be busy over at the school, so, I mean, you know...
And I can't tell you how many programs Dr. Brower has instituted helping us out on the municipal alliance. So, I really want to help her out as well. There you go. And tonight, I guess it's dying to donate to support our recreation department. And, uh, that's for tonight. So, if you go to Perkins, Lacy Recreation will receive fifteen percent of your bill.
Yeah.
So, if you got Pete, if you want to stop by and get something from, from Perkins tonight.
Actually, Veronica and I had lunch there today.
Really?
Yeah. We really did.
Great. And, uh, I guess that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thanks, Dave. Okay, I'm gonna start with some police stats. Um, this is for statistics for the month of July two thousand and fourteen. Lacy Township Police Department handled thirty-eight-hundred-and-sixty-four calls for service during the month of July two thousand and fourteen. We had seven-hundred-and-four motor vehicle stops resulting in two-hundred-and-forty-one summonings and a hundred-and-six written warnings. Seventy-four motor vehicle accidents, a hundred-and-sixty-seven first aid calls, eight DUI arrests, ninety-six physical arrests, twenty-seven drug possession arrests, uh, with eight persons arrested for drug distribution. The monitoring public is asked to exercise extra caution when driving throughout the township over the upcoming weeks. Several special events, uh, including road construction projects, as well as reopening of the schools in September, are going to require additional caution. Police Department has received a significant number of complaints regarding aggressive driving and has handled several accidents involving pedestrians as well as bicyclists throughout this summer. Lacy Township Police Department will be conducting a special courtesy child safety seat inspection event on Saturday, August twenty-third, two thousand and fourteen. Residents who have child safety seats within their vehicles are encouraged to stop at Lenoka Harbor Fire Station between nine AM and one PM on Saturday, August twenty-third, so specially trained officers can conduct a non-enforcement courtesy inspection of the seats and provide valuable guidance as to the proper use and installation of the child safety seats. Residents may simply come to the site on that day and, as no pre-registration is required. Residents are asked, uh, again, asked to lock their vehicles when parked unattended to make every effort to not leave valuable items accessible in the passenger compartment of unattended vehicles. Police Department has made significant strides in dealing with some areas of concern related to suspected drug activity in the township. Many of the law enforcement efforts would not have been possible without the assistance of the public. Residents are, uh, again, asked to provide detailed information regarding any continuing concerns, either by calling the police department or utilizing the anonymous crime tip section of the police department website at www.lacypd.org. The Lacy Police Department has been employing the strategy to use uniform patrol officers to openly conduct, uh, directed surveillances of specific areas of concern. This strategy has led to a majority of the drug arrests over the past seven months. Information provided by residents greatly assists us in our efforts. And that's from Chief Pepperata. Um, I just want to echo, uh, the comments of, uh, my fellow community members. Mark pretty much covered them all with, with regards to Lacy Day, um, with, with all the folks we have to thank. It's something that, uh, we have every year and, and it's always a, a great event, a very enjoyable event that people really come out and, uh, you know, have a great time at. And, and certainly, the, the top of the list goes to Mr. Wieland, our recreation director. It's not something that you just throw together in a matter of a week or two. Jim starts working on it next week for next year's event. And he carries on, you know, throughout the course of the year, getting the planning done. Each year, he seems to add more and more. This year, we actually had a waiting list of, um, folks that wanted to be able to come in and set up a, a tent as a vendor or different things, but we just didn't have the available space. So, it shows that the success is only growing each and every year. But Jim and his recreation staff really truly did an outstanding job, as did our Public Works, you know, Casey Parker and Public Works. Uh, it's amazing when you're in a park on Saturday, walking around it, amount of people that they've had nothing but compliments on the, the, uh, park itself and, and what an outstanding job the Public Works guys do. And, you know, they, the, the staff is fantastic, but of course, it all comes down to, um, the leader and, and that's Casey. Casey's, um, you know, whole life is, is Lacy Township and he, he lives and breathes it twenty-four-seven and, and certainly, uh, does an outstanding job and he deserves a lot of credit. The Rotary Club, um, you know, every year, they, they step up. They, they not only donate food, but they also take and, uh, get the volunteers and come out and do all the cooking for the, uh, folks that come out that day for, you know, nice time. Um, I stopped in at the, uh, tent as I, I was leaving. I had to leave a little bit early to go to Tom's, to do a wedding. Uh, and Veronica was in there and she had been there, I think, four or five hours. And, uh, she wasn't missing a peep. And, you know, a lot of people don't know how active she is in Rotary and, and all that she does. Um, you know, there was, there was a long line, you know, and I was, it was probably three o'clock when I was leaving. And I don't think Veronica was going to be finishing up serving food till at least five or six.
No, we finished up promptly at four this year.
Four o'clock, yeah. Yeah, but, um, she deserves tremendous amount of credit. Tony Angona, the Rotary Club president, um, you know, for, for his leadership throughout the course of the year. It's just an outstanding organization and, and we talk about them all the time and they, they never let us down. Anytime we need them, they're always there for us. So, uh, on behalf of myself and the, the committee and residents, please go back and, and thank them for all their hard work and all their dedication to the residents.
And if you went to, um, Gilly Park about probably, I have to say, five, six o'clock that night, you wouldn't even have known that there was anybody there that day. It was so clean from the Public Works Department. I got a lot of compliments about how neat and clean it was after the event.
They did a great job. And of course, the police department, you know, the officers that were out working at for us. And, uh, you know, Little League who we had here tonight, you know, was, it was really just a nice event having them. Um, I have to send out a special thanks to, um, if you were in the park on Saturday, we, we had a, um, a little group of children there that are certainly near and dear to my heart, um, that run Alex's Lemonade Stand here in town. Little girl, uh, that I, I kind of, uh, became friendly with her. And yeah, Peter and I went out one day to a, um, invitation that we received. And she lives over off of Lake Pontiac Drive. Her, her name is Zoe Smith and, and she is, um, an, an outstanding true volunteer with the commitment she's made to the, um, Alex's Lemonade Stand fundraising. Um, when she started out the year, she had, uh, herself and her little brother. And now, she's got twenty little volunteers that are out there working, you know, very hard. Uh, and I, it was cute because I got a text from her later that day thanking us for, you know, inviting her to the park and being able to participate. Uh, and the kids actually raised about seventeen-hundred dollars that day, uh, in the park for their cause. Uh, and it's, it's funny because when I first met her and I talked to her mom, uh, her mom had said how she really wanted the kids to get involved in some sort of a, um, you know, a function, some sort of fundraiser where they would, they would pick a charity and work for it. Uh, and Zoe and, and her little group of twenty have gone so above and beyond. So, um, you know, we're, we're gonna help them out. We're gonna try and keep them involved as much as we can, but they are truly, uh, outstanding volunteers that are gonna end up someday, uh, you know, running this town if it's, uh, the way, the direction that they go in. So, Zoe and your, your friends, uh, if you're watching tonight, thank you very much for all your help and dedication, so... Your last comment I, I have, I, I certainly want to thank, thank Tom Lidle. Uh, you know, it's, it's summertime. You know, you, you're not required to, you know, work and, and you've been here for us every time we needed you. And, uh, you know, we, we truly appreciate it. I know you've got about two weeks left before your summer's over, so go enjoy the kids and, uh, you know, we'll be back on our routine in September, so... Okay, comments from the public?
Mayor, before you open the floor, can I just, uh, I was derelict in my duty here. This was from James Wieland, an announcement saved the date, September sixth, two thousand and fourteen. It's the first annual paddle boarding challenge and the proceeds will go to Lacy Food Bank. Family fun relay race, adults, prizes, kids, T-shirts for all, pre-registered. So, if you want to pre-register, just go to, give us a call on the rec center or show up to the rec center in the back and we'll sign you up. So, uh, that'll be at Lake Bornekit. So, Veronica, maybe you could post this.
Yes, I will do that. Thank you.
Actually, amongst the five of us, I, I heard rumors that somebody's been practicing paddle boarding. Maybe we won't, would like to sponsor her in this little race.
Wait, wait, no, no, no. I'm not that good at, at that. Listen, I got a lot on my plate here.
Yep.
I strongly...
No, no, no.
Veronica has taken up the sport and, uh, you know, I know she wouldn't let us down.
Listen, I'm running my first five K in two weeks, okay?
The mayor doesn't usually make a motion, but I'm second.
I know Dave, Dave, Dave will beat me on that one, but...
Yeah. Like Dave said, get out there and enjoy it and hopefully, we'll have Veronica paddling on behalf of his governing body, so... Public comment? Regina? Oh, Mr. Moss? I'm sorry. Come on in.
Bill Moss, Biscayne Drive Fork at River Beach. I want to bring up the, uh, township bills, if I may, please. I know Veronica went over and tried to explain where the money went to, but I'd like the people to know how much money went to them. The amount, fourteen million, five-hundred-and-ninety-two thousand dollars that we had in bills this month. Five million, three-hundred-and-forty-nine thousand, four-hundred-and-fifty-six dollars is going to our school system, which people remember gets sixty-one point nine-seven-seven percent of our taxes. Another four million, eighty-five thousand, four-hundred-and-thirty-seven dollars and fifty-two cents goes to our county, which we give twenty-one point seven-four-four percent of our taxes. The rest of it goes to our township up here, which we give sixteen point two-seven-nine percent of our taxes to. Next thing I'd like to bring up, I was just asking Mr. Mayor Quinn a question. When a new development like Seabreeze goes in there and builds those houses and paved the road and very, the last thing they do on a section is, last thing is pave the road. What section do, when, is that when they hand the road over to?
That's a gated community, so they really, that would never come to the township itself. They stay as their own private roadways.
Why do we pay them twenty-eight thousand dollars?
The Municipal Services Act requires it for a private community since they pay taxes here and they pay for such things as snow plowing and street sweeping and so on and so forth. We have to reimburse them for those services.
Okay, so we reimburse them twenty-eight thousand dollars for less than a mile worth of road?
It's for...
Does that include that dirt, are they charging us to do the side?
No, 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 no. It's, it's, now, you have to look, and I, I know you come in and I don't know if you look at the vouchers, but you ha, it's, it's what we would pay, this, uh, we, we charge a hundred and five dollars an hour. So, no matter what they pay, I base it on the number of hours that, that, the average that we worked, based on a hundred and five dollars an hour times the number of trucks they had in the community, which was two. Plus for salting and sanding as well, based on the price that we as a township pay, not as what they pay. They paid a hundred and five thousand dollars out of their community's funds for snow plowing in the year two thousand and fourteen and a portion of thirteen. We're reimbursing them all that we're required to of twenty-eight thousand and change.
Seems like...
It's not excessive because you have to understand, some of those snow plowing events were twelve and thirteen hours that people were out in the road.
Virginia, we're, the part actually excessive is like in two thousand and thirteen, it was only five thousand dollars.
Because it was only for three days in December.
We didn't even snow that yet. This year was extreme, yeah. And, and it, unfortunately, it is state law that we have to do it. Um, we, we did have a meeting with the folks over there, a couple of board members, and, and they were kind of taken back because, you know, by law, we only have to pay them the amount we would pay for our regular other residents throughout town. And I think they're gonna revisit it themselves because their, you know, their association certainly, you know, pays that out. And unfortunately, it would affect their association dues, which the residents are gonna, you know, try and minimize if they can, I would assume, so...
Okay. The only other thing I have to bring up, I want to bring up about the school board, which I can't bring up at their meeting, but I know I can bring it up here. I want the people to realize and remember that we have a school board meeting vote. We have a vote this November for new, two new school board members. And we have six people applying for that job. And the two people on the school board did not re-register to rerun for their election. So, we're losing two members of our school board and we're gonna get two new people on there. So, people, please, look at, at things in papers, newspapers, the Lacy Patch, and find out who's running for your school board because now you have an option of putting two new people in there. And you'll have the same option next year. Okay? That's all I have. Thank you.
Thanks, Ms. Moss. Anna?
I was at Old Seven Forty-three Lakeside Drive, North River. I'm again beating a dead horse when I'm talking about Deerhead Lake. To me, I think the very use of it has said something. There are no people using it at all. There are more, more days than, that no one has been on the lake during the hours the guards are on, than there have been people on the lake when they're... Few people have been using it after the guards leave kayaking. And I see once in a while, one family may come down there. But the poor guards that are on duty there must be going crazy because they sit there all day long. And the only thing they see are the geese coming up on the beach. And they really have no fear whatsoever of people because they gather right around the lifeguard stand. And people, until they walk up to it, uh, they don't even move. And one day, I really was frightened when I was sitting on my own deck watching. A lady came down there with a little girl and the geese actually went after the little girl. Now, I'm just hoping that someday, we don't have a problem because those geese are getting more ligerent toward people all the time because they fear, they have absolutely no fear of them whatsoever. And it isn't just that they're fouling the lake, now they're gonna be a problem. And more times than once, I have chased them off my front yard, which is on Lakeside Drive. They're out in the road, they're holding up traffic and people are stopping for them and people are putting the brakes on and backing them. And I wonder how long it's gonna take before some kind of an accident happens because of that. It isn't just, I'm trying to save the lake, yes, but I see many more problems that they're creating besides fouling the lake. And I'm glad to see that this year, uh, this is only the second time that the lake was closed today.
Yes.
For the year. And that is an improvement over what has happened in the past. But the usage of the beach has really shown that the people of Lacy don't seem to care about Deerhead Lake anymore. The few that use the lakes go down to Lake Bornekit and they, you have done a good job on Lake Bornekit. But how long are we gonna let Deerhead Lake go? Are we gonna let it go and be another mill pond? I hope not. Not in my lifetime, I hope. I'm gonna keep up here and keep complaining about it as long as I have the strength to do it because I feel that strongly about it. Thank you.
Thanks, Anna. Thank you. Regina?
Regina, the sense of sense of dry sunrise beach. I have two questions from the caucus. I was trying very hard to pay attention to item two, with the audit correction action plans. Can you explain what that was really about?
The GAAP forty-five is, uh, um, what the state would like you to calculate your liability as to post-retirement health benefits, as to all those retired individuals. And the hypothetical thing that all of the rest of the employees retire with twenty-five years of service, what is that cost on the municipality to provide those post-health benefit retirement, uh, costs? And they want you to do a special audit on it, which can run you up to forty-five thousand dollars to do.
That's a very big calculation, is what you're saying?
Yeah, it's a very big calculation. Because you figure if you look at what we pay monthly now, just for, well, which include post-health benefit retirements plus current employee retirements, you know, you're, you're talking, you know, millions of dollars. But to calculate that over the lifetime of what the average person lives and everything else, but it's a forty-five thousand dollar expense to hire somebody to do, and we felt it was just too much money to do that. You don't get in any trouble by the state. Some towns are doing it, some aren't doing it.
All right. So, that's why you said the, um...
Yeah, the costs outweigh the benefits.
...benefit.
Yeah.
Okay. And then, the item four, strategic recovery planning report. Um, you said, um, it's got to do with Sandy and there was a flood insurance rating system.
There's a community rating system, which is out there, which is called, I think, the CRS program.
Right.
And, um, that's one of the items that, uh, that we as a committee felt was, um, something to look into, to possibly get our rating to a better rating so that it does help the residents as a community, which they, you could ask for grant money, but they're not providing grant money for it now. So, I'm not gonna apply for something that I'm not gonna get any grant money for.
Right. When you say a better rating, like what are we now as opposed to?
We're a nine now.
Uh-huh.
Yeah.
And what could be better?
One.
Oh, wow. Okay.
Yeah.
I see.
I mean, it's very tough to be a one. Most municipalities in this area are fives or sixes, meaning Long Beach Township Seaside and stuff like that, which would help reduce your flood insurance rates.
But it costs money as a resource too, to keep up with that and compile all that data for them. But yeah, in the end, people save on the flood.
Mm-hmm.
All right. I was just wondering, you know, what the parameters were.
Yeah, it's ISO score that you get and it's like a nine, but yeah, I mean...
I'm thankfully not in a flood area, but I was the other night.
Well, I, everybody in this community, I think, was in a flood area.
It was pretty bad. Um, I don't know if you can look at the flooding on Sunday and Sunday afternoon. Did you see the other night?
We had the community hall the first time and my existence here flooded.
They got water in it?
Five inches of water. We had two feet of water in the middle of Lacy Road and Route Nine.
Oh, okay.
So, we had unusual, you know, conditions the other night.
Yeah, I think it was seven inches and three hours or something.
Yeah.
All right.
You just say we have a call to the DOT on their improvements.
Well, we were out at one-thirty in the morning. We couldn't go anywhere and you, all you could see was water. I mean, there was no pavement to be seen.
Right.
Blocks and blocks. It's unbelievable. My neighbors got water in their garages and, you know, every place just looked like a swimming pool.
Yeah, in sections of Crimber Hill, we had up to twenty-one inches of water.
Okay. Well, this flood thing should be looked at as anyway. It's a, um, what is it? A risk number?
Yeah, it's a risk number. Yes, it is. Yeah.
Oh, okay. Um, Mr. Dye, both by any chance, did you hear who I had lunch with today?
Hmm.
Okay.
Why would I?
Well, you're gonna love it. Mr. Parker introduced your father-in-law to me. And I, I think I remember that guy from the planning board meeting. So, he goes, "Hey, Bob," he goes, "that girl over there, she's running against your, what is it? Son-in-law or something in the school board election." So, that Mr. Bigwell person is related to you, then your bro, would you be?
My brother-in-law.
Brother-in-law. Okay. Somebody told me he was your nephew, but I didn't think that was the case.
So, now that you got out of the, you're happy you got out of college?
Well, I didn't think he was your nephew.
Oh, but now you're happy you got here and you mentioned that he's my brother-in-law.
Well, it's gonna get better. It's gonna get better. Brace yourself. Um, Mr. Quinn, I unfortunately heard that people think you are the local public official in my letter last week that Lacy Patch had posted. I should've said local state public official. I got a lot of requests from people to reveal who all the phone calls were from. I got a lot of requests from people to reveal who all the phone calls were from, so instead of telling people individually, the first two calls came from Senator Chris Connors, much to my surprise. And he asked me if I would support Mr. Nola and Mr. Kenneth, and I said, you know, memory serves me that Mr. Nola has a conflict between the two. So you'd be swapping off one person with a conflict for another person with a conflict. So that was the first item. I thought that was very interesting. And then, a few days later, Mr. Nola called me himself, which, you know, I wasn't too upset, but I was like, okay, enough is enough. And then, the weekend before, I had done a petition. Mr. Littelier brought it up to the clerk's office, because I just happened to be having some business with Mr. County Clerk there, as you know. And not two hours later, my phone was ringing again. Chris called the second time, and I'm like, look, I don't want to hear it. So then, like I said, the third call came in from Mr. Nola, and then, the next day, I'm on vacation, and Mr. Dasky called me. And I'm like, look, I'm out of town till the 30th, and I don't want to hear it. And basically, that's where I'm at. I don't want to hear it. I have put together everything where I now understand who's in this corner of the church and who's in that corner of the church, okay? So, when I got back from vacation, I looked up some records that were online. Everybody knows what ELEC is, the Election Law Enforcement Commission. So they had some online reports, and I was looking them up from the McAvoy, Whitley, and Giordano campaign. I mean, I knew certain things, but to see it in black and white is a whole other story. So, online, I found out that there were two in-kind donations, or contributions, as they call them, each 200 from Eastport and 200 from Georgetown Village, which rested my suspicions that, of course, you supported Whitley, McAvoy, and Giordano. Now, my major question is this, Mayor Quinn. If you are able to influence four seats as a majority on the school board, this is a three-part question. What do you hope to get out of it? What's in it for the students, and what's going to be the benefit for the taxpayers? I'm curious.
Let me just explain, there's not, every single little story you put together and tell people, it never has all the facts or, you know, an end story to it.
So enlighten us.
Okay, so, everything you believe in your little mind is not necessarily always the truth.
Okay.
The Whitley, the Whitley woman works in our office, she's a realtor.
I've seen her signs.
And I, I did donate money to Mrs. Whitley, just as I donated to other people over the course of the years. And I don't, I don't see people that I'm friendly with being a detriment. I served on the school board for many years.
I didn't say it was a detriment.
I know, no. So if you're questioning my validity as far as, you know, what's good for the children, you can do it all you want. But people in this town that know me, know where my heart is, and know that the right thing will be done when I'm involved in something. And I'll continue to do that, I'll continue to lead my life the way I lead my life. You can make all the accusations in the world, Regina, because I, it doesn't...
Well, let me get an accusation, it's just that that's what I saw.
Can I finish? You, you called me about this, this whole recall, you know, nightmare that you're dealing...
I didn't call you, I spoke to you in person.
No, you, you spoke to me in person, you called me, and I, you sent me a half dozen emails, and then called me up again and wanted to know, did you read the emails? Do you have the emails in front of you?
Oh, I just...
On your recall?
Oh, I just, yeah, I did.
And when my answer to you was, Regina, I'm not getting involved in it, it's your cause, if you believe in your heart that you're going to take and do something, be my guest and do it. But don't try and drag me into it as Gary Quinn, or drag me into it as Mayor Quinn, because I'm not going there, I'm not getting involved in it. That's, please, that's when you took the turn, and all of a sudden, hey, let's attack Mayor Quinn now. I have no problem with that. That stuff doesn't bother me in the least. I've been in this game for 15 years at least. And there's been a lot of times where there's been somebody like you, there's been somebody else on the other side. It's always going to be Regina DeCensus. I believe that you're a very passionate woman, I believe that in your heart, you think you're doing the right thing. But you know what? Go out there and tell people what you're going to do for them, if you're ever elected to the school board, or if you're ever elected to the town council. Don't go out there and attack Mr. Dykoff's brother-in-law, Mrs. Whitley, Mr. McAvoy, Mr. Giordano, you know, all the professionals you're talking about. Mr. Chris Connors, Senator Connors, who I know for a fact has opened many, many doors for you at the state level, who at this point in time, you might as well not make calls to that, that office.
Oh, no, I wouldn't.
Asking for those courtesies, because you turned on a lot of people just to try and get a personal gain on your own, and that I don't agree with. I, I will...
I don't see the personal gain. Can you explain that?
Regina, you're in here tonight, you know, talking about, if you went to the school board, you know, they, they're not going to entertain you, they're not going to listen to you, but we have an open policy here. I don't have a problem with you taking, stepping up to the microphone, talking about whatever you want to talk about, but say your piece and sit down. We're not going to get into a, a go-around where I'm going to attack you.
Oh, I don't want to do anything, it's just that when I was at lunch today with Mr. Parker, he openly admitted to me that he supported Downing, Polino, and Zadara, which I thought...
What's the big deal with that?
I just thought that was odd. And last year, I was put in the middle, and I even got yelled at by someone for running last year. I won't say who.
Why not?
A remark was made to me.
I mean, why not say who?
I was yelled at for running, and I was yelled at for running my son, and I'm like, this is a free country, anybody that wants to can sign up.
Yeah, but you keep dropping innuendos out there, and, and you give part of the story. If you're going to be a candidate, yeah, they're all shaking their head yes and back here. If you're going to be a candidate, be upfront, be honest, and, and be transparent.
Tell me what I've been dishonest about.
You just stood here, just said, I, I was told last year I was yelled at not to run.
Yeah.
Not saying who yelled at you, you're not going to mention...
I don't want to name the person.
So then, don't make the comment. Just leave it go.
But I'm just wondering why, all of a sudden, after 11 years, I've become an issue.
I don't think you're an issue.
I've been running on and off for 11 years.
The only person who's making you an issue is yourself. I mean, I, I know you. You know, we're, we're in a small town here, okay? And we're all connected in some way, whether it be friendships through business, whether it be friendships through schools, whether it be friendships, you know, in other ways. Everybody pretty much knows each other in this town for the most part. If they're involved in the political game, or if they're involved in the schools, everybody pretty much knows each other. And you're saying, okay, well, because of the fact that, that you know Mrs. Whitley, Mr. Giordano, Mr., uh, who'd I miss, Ms. McAvoy, you know, those are your people. I mean, I, I donated money to Josephine Whitley, period. I mean, that was what I did. And she got, she got bashed in a lot of ways, because, you know, Gary Quinn's trying to take control of the school board. I know more involvement in the school board than anything else in my life. I enjoy what I do here. I left the school board 12 years ago. I came here, and believe it or not, a lot of the people on the school board, I served with. And, and I believe they've done, you know, a good job, they've, they've had issues, they've had bumps in the roads, we all have that. You know, if you came back here in 2010 and 11, this room was filled with people, you know, and we were making the worst decisions in the world. We got through it. But you are fighting for, I think you've run for at least 10 years now, every, every school board election.
I think it's 11.
Okay, so 11 years, you've run in school board elections. I mean, I wish you the best. I don't know if you're ever going to get elected to the board, but don't take and attack other people to take and make yourself look good to win a seat. You told me personally, when we first started talking after one meeting a couple of months ago, yourself, you didn't think you were going to run this year, because I have a lot...
I wasn't sure, right?
Let me just finish. You have a lot of personal issues that you're dealing with, your mom and dad need your attention, and people were taking and making threats again, against you personally. I said, Regina, you have to make that decision. And then, out of the blue, I just, you know, was told, Regina's in the race. God bless it. I mean, I wish you the best.
That's what I wish.
But at the same time, tell people what you're going to do for them if you get on the school board. Tom Palcheski, who you refer to quite a bit in your, in your different comments...
Yeah.
And, and the speeches that you make, was a good guy. Tom and I served for a lot of years in the basketball program, we worked together, but Tom handled himself in the wrong way when he got on the school board. You're not going to go onto the school board, whether it's you or any other person, or any board up here, and go in with an ax to grind and try and take and make change, because you'll never get the cooperation. If you can't work with people, and cooperate with people, and negotiate with people, you shouldn't be on a board.
I already know that. Four people have to make decisions there, I'm well aware of that.
Well, I'm telling you...
I do have suggestions, but I'm holding them for the debate. I've had these suggestions for quite a few years, but as you say, they cannot be implemented unless there's a majority.
Why hold them for the debate? Get out there and tell people, starting tomorrow, what you're going to do.
Contract cuts, it's simple.
No doubt about it.
But you can't do contract cuts when you have three people with relatives on the board.
Regina, we're in a small town. Let me tell you something. You attacked me in a couple of different things over the fact that my wife's a teacher. My wife has been a teacher for 32 years, teaching special ed in, in not only this town, but the staff attached.
That doesn't go when you want it.
Okay, but no, because Mr. Quinn has somebody related to school. She was there 20 years before I got involved in any of this stuff. But at the same time, you know, my beliefs are my beliefs, and if you're not going to get elected to the school board, or any other person that has a connection, as you say, to somebody in the school board and do the right thing, it's not necessarily a conflict. You're in a small town, and you see how hard it is to get people to step up to the plate. We live in a different world.
I see that.
When I ran for office first with Mr. Dykoff, you used to have to go out and take an air in the paper, and put the paper out there, and pay for it, and try and go out and win the votes. We're in a different world now, where technology, an hour after you walk out of this meeting, it's going to be all over, all over the page.
Well, ELEC now allows electronic filing, I just found out, when I went on there with Grant today.
Of course, yeah, you can get access to anything. But I mean, that's the way, the, the world we live in.
But is it not true that when you have a relative on the entity that votes are being taken against, you have to abstain?
If it's affecting that person.
Correct.
Right, so the supervisors and contracts kind of thing, all seven people have never been able to vote on that for many, many years, because there's always people in conflict.
But what's the difference there? If you have four individuals, whether it be the school board or any other board, four out of the seven that have the ability to do it, do you not think those four people that were elected by the residents in the community are going to go in there and make the right decision, and do what's best for the children, number one, and for the taxpayers behind that?
Right, but if there's conflict, usually that makes it a little more difficult.
No, you've got, you've got four out of seven that can vote, so where's the conflict? You still have votes.
But those four people aren't going to vote on contract cuts if those other three people have family members that will either, you know...
I don't agree with that. I don't agree with that. We've got five people to sit up here, and I can tell you, from the bottom of my heart, we'll go in the back room, do everything but put boxing gloves on, and work as a team, and at the end of the day, we're going to find a way to agree. We might not all get what we want, but at the end of the day, we're going to come out here unified and do what we want, so that we're on the same page, which is the best for the community. And I know school board members from the time I was there, and it's not the way you perceive it in your eyes, it's a different situation when you're in the back room negotiating, trying to work out.
Right, but I had asked this past year, I said, what contract concessions were made in favor of the taxpayer, and the answer pretty much was none. And when I asked what they did get, they did remember one thing, and the one thing was, what was it, sick date payout for new employees was now limited to something like 10 or 15,000 dollars.
State statute limit.
State statute limit. But other than that, nobody could tell me of a contract cut. And Mr. Savage even said to me, well, it's a cut, but we won't see it for like 15 or 20 years, I guess, until the new people retire.
That's the problem with contracts, yeah. We've done the same thing here. We, we've gone into changes in our contracts, in our last, you know, PBA contract, SLA contract, Teamsters contract, we've taken and made changes, but they're going to be for new hires. We're not taking away from somebody that's here today. We're not giving away as much as you used to see in par years, because salaries have certainly gone up to a certain degree.
All right, well, let me run another question. Do you guys give mileage reimbursements for employees that use their own vehicles?
We don't allow them to use their own vehicles. They have to take a municipal car, because it does cause problems with our insurance.
But the state does.
But, and it is on the books that if you do have to take your own car...
In the state contract?
State, in the state contract, state employees are given mileage reimbursements for using their own vehicle.
So that, I know it's very customary, but I've also been told that it can come out of the contract if the power is to be taken out.
But we do have it on the books, that if you do use your own car, because there's no other municipal car available, that yes, you will be reimbursed. It's not in a union contract, it's in our policies and procedures, man.
It's in policy. Because they're, they're issuing checks, say, for mileage reimbursement, where it costs more money to produce the check than the reimbursement, you know what I mean?
But again, that's not something we have control over.
I know that, I'm just giving that as a, for example, because you just answered what we're going to do with change. I said, that's just one of the things I've noticed, that you know it costs X amount of dollars to pay someone to process that voucher, and that check is like, what, $10.74 or something like that?
Fine, but let me ask you a question. You, you're going to save $10.40 on that issue, what is that doing for the children and the system itself? That's the key. What are you going to do?
If you take away the mileage allowance, then that money could go to textbooks and supplies.
But, so you're expecting people to use their own vehicles and not reimburse them?
No, I think if you're like paid $199,000 a year, you don't need the .31 cents a mile.
But usually, but...
You mean...
But what, but they're not all getting paid a hundred and something thousand dollars?
No, 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 I'd say like you put in a parameter, like anybody making over 100 can't get the .31 cents anymore per mile, something like that, just parameters, like, okay, the person, you know, lower ranking...
Let's stop for a second.
You have to be fair to them.
I'm not negotiating a school contract with you here, and to tell you, this is the wrong place.
Parameters.
Okay, I, I, and I'm only, only going to end this with, with one thing I want to tell you. Basically, you've made a comment that you're not using this, this accusation against Mr. Quinn and, and against, for yourself. You need to go back and read your patch letter, because it's exactly what you did in the patch letter. You, you basically accused again Mr. Quinn, and then you accused the former person in power, who shall remain nameless, I'll let you guess who that is, I'm guessing it's the person you had lunch with today.
Right.
Um, accusing him of being behind the other two candidates. And you're the only one without a conflict. Your exact words. You're the only one who were in a conflict.
I don't expect anybody to give me one.
So again, you're, but you're using the, but you're using the accusation to your own benefit. So, you say you're not, but, but you are.
I have to let people know that I don't take money from people like Mr. Quinn.
Well, what conflict, now, Mr. Bidwell and Mr. Claus, what conflict do they have? Do you know anything about them? Have you ever met them?
Not yet.
But you accuse them of being in, in someone else's pocket, but you'd never met them?[1518.54]